Bye.
I could just warm up, I get out there in the garden, I do my exercise.
Meeting would now come to order.
All right.
This meeting of the mayor and the board of aldermen for the city of Cleveland is now in session. If you have any business before this board, please come forward and you'll be heard.
Uh, see nobody else, uh, suggested them to reject it, do a side press.
Sir, you with me, are you with me? Dear heavenly father, I thank you for this wonderful city that you provided us to live in. I thank you for all those in our city to volunteer. The, uh, the business owners that choose to invest here. And everyone that makes our city so wonderful, I thank you for each and every person that lives here. And chooses to continue forward. Do I pray, uh, that you reside over this meeting tonight? That everything we do and say is done in a way that's pleasing to you for the furtherment of our community. Your name I pray, amen.
Amen, amen. I'd like to take this time to welcome Bill Suss. This afternoon, we have, uh, one Bill Suss, uh, Ms. Lucille Courtney. Lucille, you may come forward now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how you doing?
The pleasure to be here on this evening. My five minutes has started.
Five minutes.
Oh. I come to address the city and the board into some concerns that I do have for the city. Especially in the black community. And it's starting with Sterling Anderson Park. I've been coming here, I financed this twenty eighteen. Talking about the enhancements of the park. And only enhancement so far that they've done, that was done outside of barbecue grill and, uh, pavilion. However, we need proper seating. If you ride through the community, if you ride on that side of town. You need painting, our swings are terrible. I can't even take my grandkids out to swing in the park because the swings are not proper. They bit, they torn. The swings that need to be painted, the basketball goals, they're not even up. So we're looking for positive outlet for the black children in the community, and they're in it. I've noticed they was taking up softball fields away. They've been taking Eastside Park away, the softball field, but I'm looking around at Amzy Moore Park. I mean, our parks need to be enhanced for our children to have something to do. And right now, they don't have anything to do. You know, as they say, I don't mind as a devil playground. I talk to the kids in the community, even my grandbaby, she's ten. She looked at the park, she said, Granny, those swings needs to be fixed, Granny, that's live or they love the park. They love the waiting pool, they went to the waiting pool last year. Thankful that that was fixed, because that was one of my concerns as well. And so I'm asking that proper seating. Fly Zone, they did a reading in the park, I think, last year. They couldn't even sit down, they had to do blankets on the ground. To even communicate or to interact with the children in the community to read a book. Because we don't have proper seating. We don't have proper garbage cans. I don't think we're asking for same garbage cans and seating that we have downtown, that we have in Farmers Park, that we have over in Bearcreek Park. I played in that park on forty seven. And those same two by four board benches are still sitting there. I can't sit there, my father can't even go out to the park and sit down, he's seventy seven. We right there, three houses down from the park. The park is our social media. That's how we came together. That's how everybody in the neighborhood know each other. And we have gatherings. We can't even do that, why? Because we can't sit down, the swings are not proper. Only thing we're asking is that we have prop, everything that we have on the west side of town. We're just asking for it over here. In our community for our children that can't get to that side of town. They loves to play. We all love to play, even, I'm example, park commission. Why they stop coming out to the park? They used to come out to the park and interact with the community, that was community building. They gave the teenagers their first job during the summer. Don't you know how fun that was to be able to go to the park, then go to the center, then come back to the park? Everybody was communicating, everybody, that, that build the community. So I'm asking that you all take a step into that even further. To give that for basketball, we used to have basketball tournaments. We was go out there and play.
I have, I have an alderman that wants to speak, if you'll give him just a moment.
Okay, so that's gonna pause my time?
No.
Okay, well, I kicked the.
Well, that part of, part of this time is the interaction with the board.
Okay.
So, yes ma'am. Gary.
Uh, I thought that when Jason Woods was our park director. That he actually met with you and y'all went over all the things, it's, it's Sterling Anderson?
Yes, we did. And all things.
And none, and, and, and you're telling me that none of that was ever corrected?
The only thing that was corrected, as I just stated, was the waiting pool, the barbecue grill, and the pavilion. The, uh, building with the, with the bathroom. Other than that, the seating hasn't been addressed yet. The swings haven't been addressed, nor has the basketball goal.
Okay, well, I, I just think we need to revisit that. We have a new, new park commissioner now, let's just.
Yes.
Let's, let's do it, let's do a reassessment. And, you know, we're getting close to budget time, we reassess all of our parts anyway.
Yes.
And that's what I was gonna say, Christian, I believe, had, he, he's our park commissioner now. And I, I believe he had some stuff already in the works for the parks for this budget. So, I mean, did you want to speak to any of that?
Yeah, I'm in the process of getting quotes for all, because I'm, because Amzy Moore swings are bad. Pretty much every park that has swings, their swings are bad. So I'm getting, I got a quote in the making for swings for everyone to be replaced. The taller swings and the, the bigger kid swings. Uh, getting a quote for the chains to be re- replaced where, uh, they don't have chains. And then also where we need to, and then we are in the process of getting quotes for other stuff. Um, for Amzy Moore, ALO, Ruby, Firemans, and all, all of our parks trying to update the playground.
Okay, can I speak with you after this? Okay.
Can I just address some other comments you said, so I know you, you looked at me quite a bit, I know I'm.
I'm talking real quick, I worked as park commissioner when I was at high school.
Yeah.
Uh, and I remember going into the parks and we would work on the fields, then we'd go play. And Christian can probably speak to this, one of the problems we have is just getting, getting help, right? Get people who want to take that type of job, because it's, you know, you're out in the heat and working and getting the kids to come out and work during summers is a challenge. So I, I know we'd like to see, you know, more of that happen, but you just don't want to come and take those types of jobs anymore.
Well, what if we partnership with that and get some kids, because I know some kids in the community that doesn't mind, because that's community service for them, especially when they're going off to college. So that's one of the things they look at.
Christian is all about some free labor, he is all about it.
Oh, God, well, we, we gonna speak, and I'm gonna make this last with suggestions pertaining to the street.
Field, so I, I think Josh or Christian can speak to why we're not using the ball fields at Amzy Moore. We don't have lights at Amzy Moore, right? Um, so it's a safety issue.
Well, can we get lights? Uh, while we in the process of getting everything else?
Um, I don't, I mean, I, I think that's a bigger budget issue, I, I don't, Josh, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
We had a hailstorm, so anyway.
Yeah, we had a lot of storm damage to all the lights in the fields. And we did get a little bit of insurance money to cover it. The problem is all the wooden poles are rotten and they're, they're probably fifty years old or so. And it's, we have grossly more, uh, of a need than we do the funds. So right now, we're being, we're just having this conversation. We're trying to come up with a plan of how we can take the amount of budget we can and accomplish the most lights with it. So we don't have enough money to replace all the lights in all the fields that need it today. So we're trying to work out a plan, figure out how we can phase it in or so forth, so.
It'll take time, in other words, it's gonna be a long process of phasing that in.
Uh, well, I do understand that.
And also on the, uh, safety issue on those goals, that was a safety issue where we had to have some of those goals taken down.
And I think, are those back in at?
One back.
One back at Sterling.
The shooter didn't come from the goals being down. Once, once you remove the goals, that's what caused the shooting. We took the basketballs out their hands and put guns in it. So therefore penalizing the community for something that probably didn't happen with the kids in the community, it probably wasn't even anybody from Cleveland. But you're penalizing a community for someone else's issue, when you have police officers that could, could patrol the area. But that's what our children are looking for, they wanna play basketball if we can't even go.
See, I think we've taken, put up and taken down the basketball goes.
Several times.
Several times.
I can, I can answer that.
Every time we put them up, bad things happen in the community. Goes to the police department and they say, take them down.
That's right.
Take them down.
We have requests.
So it's not, you know.
The community.
Address the community as a whole, because one or two people, you're penalizing our children. You're not taking anything away from over there in the white communities. Everything that's being pushed over there, which is enhancing that community.
We exceeded.
But our community are looking.
Well, you're about ten.
Here, Dudley.
Yeah, Dudley.
The, the last shooting at Eastside Park, they were playing basketball. They did have guns with them laying out on, on court while they were playing basketball.
Okay, so where was the police officer? Okay.
Police officer.
You doing what I'm saying?
We're all over town.
Yeah, we have a whole town.
Over there, you're, you're not taking away from over there at all. But you're possibly removing.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
Look at the advancements of it.
No, no, we're not running police everywhere.
I, I didn't say you weren't running police. I said you're not taking anything away from over there, you done bought a whole new soccer field.
I think.
You got a whole new base.
Five minutes. Thank you.
I'm not going. Yeah, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Point, thank you.
Can you tell us your address?
Nine zero seven L O.
Elm Street. Elm Street.
L O.
How come you, how come you pay your water bill at nine oh seven Elm Street and have provided a lease to the city of Cleveland saying that's your residence?
Yes, that's my daughter, I, I, I assist her, Adrian Courtney.
And that's in the county, I think.
Her name should be on there, you see it?
No ma'am.
A V R I A N N A.
I think your name's on it.
And I'm Sarah Simpson of Cleveland, Mississippi.
No ma'am.
That's in the county.
Yeah, nine oh seven Elm's in the county.
Yeah.
He's not a resident.
Hey, hello, is he, you wanna check my address?
Well, your dad is, but you're not.
I'll be available too.
No ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Let's move on.
Let's move on.
I, uh, I would least, uh, ought of being this, this public hearing, uh, adjudication.
Gotcha, we got a short list tonight, these are, uh, notices pursuant to twenty one nineteen eleven. The first being fifteen forty four Arnold Avenue, Mary Johnson. The second being, uh, eight eleven Beaman Drive, Willie D. Johnson. Uh, the third being eleven hundred sixth Avenue, B M G Investment Properties LLC. No, two oh six North Fourth Avenue, Terry M. Byrd. I don't see Terry, uh, fourteen oh four ALO Avenue, Latonya Q. Self. And five eleven South Bow Avenue, Jordan Rental Properties LLC. Is there anyone here to speak to any of these?
Uh, eight eleven Beaman is requesting a thirty day extension and two oh six North Fourth is requesting a thirty day extension.
And do you recommend that?
Yes.
Uh, we would be in order to do a motion second to adjudicate with the extensions as requested.
Motion was second.
Motion that was made and second for the extension, all in favor say aye.
Uh, aye.
Oh, as here it in the motion.
Billy, what was that second address, please?
Two zero six North, well, that is Terry M. Byrd.
Thank you.
Also, you have anything else?
Oh, not on that one.
We have anything in the executive session.
No, not unless you want, oh, I could go along with it.
I don't think we need, okay.
They said, uh, engineering, okay?
Yeah, Josh, all right, I'll hit my few, few action items tonight. Uh, first up, we are, we've been working on it for about a year, but we are, we need to get board approval for the mayor to authorize the. B W S I R L documents, the Department of Health, uh, water project that we've been working on to replace undersized ones around the city. And, uh, anyways, we talked about it a bunch, but.
So move, second.
A motion that was made by Robert and second by Mr. Abraham to, uh, get a mayor permission, all in favor say aye.
Uh, aye.
Oh, as here it, motion here.
All right, next up, we took bids on the, the airport emergency vehicle access road. Which is the multimodal, uh, funded project, we're requesting approval to award the project to the lowest bidder. And I believe y'all have the bids out as well, we're well under budget too.
That's great, I'll make a motion, we accept that bid.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Paul, well, and second by Miss Wentz, that we accept the lowest bid, all in favor.
Uh, aye.
As here it, motion here.
Last up, we completed our annual street inspection, provided the report for y'all's review. What we're asking for tonight, and I think we've, uh, circled all the roads that we're recommended to do under this year's cycle of this funding. And so we're requesting approvals from the board to proceed ahead with bidding out, uh, that list of roads. I think y'all should have a summary of it. We, we started breaking out future years just to show you some of the stuff we're seeing. Uh, but all of tonight, all we're requesting for is the twenty twenty five list.
Yeah, we got it.
They're all also shown on the maps as well.
So move, second.
Motion was made by Mr. Abraham, was second by Brian, all in favor.
Uh, yeah.
Oh.
You gonna make us smile with these streets prepared.
As here it.
Is that, is that.
I want you to know that, I'm smiling.
Is that less than our.
Just, I'm really glad that we've gone down, this has been a great, great program. Get a couple of years into, through this year, I think everybody's really gonna see the impacts. We had a big underway last year, but.
He has a question.
Uh.
I said, is, is the straight list in, is the straight list in the Dropbox?
It is.
It is.
Under engineering?
Yes, yeah. Very good.
We uploaded the, the.
Okay, thank you.
Like you had to change it at the end, we uploaded one and it didn't include the list of the ones we're doing this year and stuff, it's a future one.
One with the pink right now.
If you got a few minutes after the meeting, I'd like to just get some clarification on some of these.
Sure.
No, there's no problem, there's, there's a couple of questions.
Thank you, all you do.
Anything else?
Thank you, Josh.
Thank y'all.
If there, if there is no question, uh, the niche, all of the being is, uh, our city.
Hey, good evening, um, got consent agenda, needs a motion second to approve.
Motion.
Gary, Gary.
Gary and Brian.
Motion made by Gary and second by Danny, all in favor say aye.
Uh, aye.
As here it, motion here.
And, and I do not have, um, anything for executive session this evening, uh, so that concludes me, unless y'all have any question.
Good. All right, Mr. Prana?
Yes, sir. I have, uh, a question for two bearings, Brian Robinson, uh, Airon Block from North Christmas. Get your question to fifteen foot yard, side yard setback bearings on a five foot side yard setback bearings to construct a new building at North Christmas. The front and rear yard meet setbacks, current it is, they just need to add two side yard setbacks. It's request advertised.
It's of advertising.
I so move.
Yeah, second.
Questions made to advertise. All in favor say aye.
Uh, aye.
As here it, motion here.
That's all, I haven't seen anything to make.
Alan Michelle.
Uh, Anna.
It's Alan.
Anna, it's nice to meet you.
Is she here?
Yes, she's on Zoom.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
How are y'all? Um, y'all have my report unless you need something from me, I'm good.
I don't know if y'all looked at her report, but she had a great part.
She did.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's amazing when you drive by there, it's just.
Now we have, uh, police chief.
Oh, y'all have my report if y'all have any questions.
Well, how, how are your numbers, chief?
Oh, what, sir?
You fully staffed?
I'm three gal.
Okay. That's pretty good.
You know, I had a conversation this morning about, uh, the storm sirens, just for the benefit of everybody that watches at home, can you kind of give us an update on how those things work, what we're doing, and how we're testing?
So, uh, Saturday, the storm, uh, sirens were set off because we went under a tornado warning. Um, there was some community members that said some of our sirens did not go off. Um, this morning at eight o'clock, I set them back off again. And, um, we tested them, we have one that did not go off, that was the one at the animal shelter. Uh, we're in the process with, with me and, uh, Greg, we have contacted the siren company. And they're sending in a guy at the end of this week to, uh, see what's going on with it. Once they, they were saying didn't go off Saturday, we're perfectly fine today. Give you a, a jet, every Saturday, we do a test with sirens at twelve o'clock, unless it's raining or storming.
Yeah.
If it's raining or storming, we'll not, we will not set them off, but if it's on a sunshiny day, we will set them off.
Well, I know it works.
It's all long, yes.
I agree. Yeah, Amzy Moore was in my bedroom this morning, so I know it worked. Thank you. It's all, it's good.
Y'all have any other questions?
I overthrew a storm, so wow.
Me too.
Yeah.
Now, uh, the, uh, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, the only thing I have is just to kind of reiterate what Dudley's talking about, we called it, uh, focused on the storm sirens, they service them every year. We did the backlog on the checking of the sirens as far as, uh, and it has not been missed, it's worked every time. We may have an intermittent issue, and, uh, Federal Signal has said that they have had some intermittent things, they've got a guy, we've got a guy coming to end this week to look at it. Um, just so happens that's the one that did work, uh, during the tornado siren deal we did the other day. This morning did not work, the only one that, that didn't work. So, uh, we think the storm have made taken out the board, unfortunately, but, uh, it actually worked during the, uh, when it was done the other day. It's just this morning it didn't work during the test, so that's one of the things they're gonna be addressing. So that is on schedule every November, the company comes in and services them, changes the batteries out, all the mechanical. And then we've got a radio company that comes in and he does the radio maintenance as well, and that's done every November in your budget. But we did check the backlog, uh, just for as Brian is saying, for information for the community. And it's been checked and police officer in front of it every Saturday, so, uh, they are staying on top of it.
Yeah.
Together, we're staying on top of it.
Yep.
Okay, after listening to that, suggestion we approve.
Ted, Ted.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, uh, Dudley, we, we had talked about, uh, some of these cops grants that are available out there. And some, some of them are exclusively for e- equipment. You know, and we, we included in that discussion, we talked about maybe completely revamping our camera system. Well, if we're, if we're gonna be looking at that, why not let's take a look at the siren system also? I mean, you know, some, some of that equipment's probably seventy five years old.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, even though it may still work, its reliability's gotta be decreasing every year.
Yes, sir. We will look into it.
Absolutely.
Are they in the other comments? From that, we'll go to the animal shelter.
Uh, good evening, y'all have got my report, if you have any questions for me, otherwise, we are having an Easter event on Saturday. The community's gonna come out and Easter egg hunt with the dogs, let the dogs find eggs with treats in it, just a little enrichment activity for people and animals. So we think that's gonna be a fun little thing, uh, for the community and some good engagement, but other than that, unless you have any questions for me.
Good thing.
Good job.
Thank you.
And, uh, our niece, uh, uh, Tom with, uh, Waste Water.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Tom.
Uh, apologize for my absence, I'm currently FDIC with the fire department doing some training. Um, but tonight, I'm seeking approval to accept the lowest and best bid to do some improvements on our effluent station. Uh, the pumps we have down there are far too expensive to constantly have to work on. Uh, we've been having some electrical issues out there due to lightning and whatnot, uh, this new system we're talking about putting in. The entire system, uh, two pumps, flow meter, pacing valve and everything. Will cost the same amount as just replacing one pump, uh, so I'm gonna go forward with that.
Yeah, motion for that motion, sir.
Yeah, is this a budgeted item?
It is not budgeted, but he has the money, he, he budgets for repairs.
Okay, so this, this, okay, but he has room in his budget for this.
We looked at the budget and he has room.
Very, very good, did somebody make a motion?
He has to budget for pump repairs, um, throughout the year, so.
But we're not repairing, we're replacing, is that correct?
It, it is correct, but it's still repairing.
It's within that budget.
It's within the budget.
Okay. I second the motion.
A motion was, uh, made by Robert and second by Miss Wentz, uh, for. Repair.
Yes.
Replacement.
Effluent station improvements.
Accepting the station for.
Those invested.
The lowest investment, all in favor say aye. As here it, the motion here.
Thank you, I don't, I don't have anything else to add.
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor. Thomas.
Yes.
This is Danny, would you, would you explain to me your schedule on fire hydrant inspection? Or give me an idea, uh, how you keep up with this, how often?
Uh, yes, sir, so we don't have an ac- actual, uh, plan, uh, like a timeframe, uh, when the guys have, uh. Breaks in their schedule on fixing these water leaks and water mains and whatnot, they, the assistant director will send out a few guys to do, uh, various wards. Uh, but I do have the hydrant plan in my office, uh, that I can present to you next week when I come back.
Are we covering the entire city once a year, twice a year, or what are we doing? What do you think we're on schedule to do?
City would, it's, it's, uh, approximately once a year, every hot.
Thank you, sir.
You know, questions? Now we will go to public work.
Yes.
Spare.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, I don't have anything outside my report, let's try something for me.
Well, let me thank you and your guys this, you know, through this weekend, because I promise you guys will work and, uh, working at full speed.
Yes, sir.
So thank you, all you do and, and making sure the city stayed, you know, fluent, and so thank you again.
Yes.
The safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have, Steveo, you know what I'm gonna ask, you got four pages of streetlights out, sixty two lights by my count.
Yes, sir.
What are we hearing from Energy?
Uh, I got a, the work orders is sent, was sent. This morning, I think, back to us. But I'll get them to you, uh, as soon as we get off, I can send them back to you, send them to Michelle.
And, and for both parties, uh, Steve, if you need us to bring them back before us, because I know Energy came before us and they gave an update, but I don't think anyone from Delta, they were giving us anything.
And in, Delta Electric's usually, Steveo, can, you can correct me, Delta Electric's usually a little bit faster, air repair than Energy.
They're within a day.
Right.
Of working on their lights. Uh, Energy, every time we call Energy or somebody, is, we got other towns, uh, it's usually excuse.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, I'll call in the morning and I'll get that work order pages to you, Michelle.
But now that we have this method of reporting it and we get work orders back, we have a way to track it.
Okay.
So this new, new system of reporting is much better.
Yes.
Than what we've had in the past.
That's good, you said they had to have a work one.
That's right.
Thank you, Steveo.
No problem.
Good job, thanks. All right.
Next, uh, Apple.
Evening, everyone, only got one quick item for tonight, and it's approval of the, uh, change order number four for the North Rampade. This is the final change order, basically just the final quantities, change orders, actually, uh, decrease in the contract amount.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second. Motion was made by Mr. Wilson, second by David Ham for approval of the change order, all in favor say aye.
Could you, you, real quick, so the board may know, you, you taking bids Thursday?
Taking bids Thursday on the, uh, the.
Extension of the north ramp.
Yes.
Okay. Now include a new crossover for the.
Yes.
To connect the taxiway with the ramp. That's great.
Yeah, and how many graduates you got coming out this year?
Uh, to be honest with you, I, I'll have to check with Marshall to find out.
Yeah.
Um, they're still in search for, uh, new department chair, so I just, whenever I'm gonna tell you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, Ms. Michelle.
Uh, Christian, I think is.
Oh, Christian, the park commissioner.
Outside of Florida, I hope, a couple have gotten called about the bear pen gate being locked, the automatic gate being locked. So we needed to lock it because people were coming in after hours and, uh, parking at the park, so we closed it, chained it down. The reason we're not opening it through the day is, it's not an easy task to put the arm on and, and to lock the pin, to be able to lock it, so it doesn't, it's not swinging and hitting any cars. So it doesn't, it's not swinging and hitting any cars. But we do have a quote that I'll be submitting to see if it's something we can get done to get fixed, uh, the gate situation. As well as after I submitted my report, Sparklight had given me a call and they are going to sponsor every one of our park commission kids who are participating in baseball and softball. They're going to sponsor ice cream, a day of, of ice cream to everybody who's participating.
Yeah, that's great. I like scheduled time with you too, when, when we can go through Eastside Park and look at some of those, uh, uh, limbs, I guess, need cutting for mobile lights. We have lighting, but the limb keep things.
Okay.
We do take credit cards out at the concession stands, don't we?
We did.
What's the percentage, what's the percentage we're taking in, uh, last year? Do you have any idea? Do we do twenty-five percent, fifty percent total sales?
Uh, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Other cities are going to one hundred percent debit cards, credit cards.
If I went a hundred percent debit card, I would lose.
I'm saying, no, I didn't say do it. I just, I, I said, I, I, I'm just saying that.
I would say it's not even fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because for a long time we didn't have the option to pay by debit and credit card. So people are used to bringing cash.
Right. And, and we have to have that option because we.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Definitely lose that.
That's right.
A lot of kids come up. I just like to know what a percentage is.
That's right.
Okay. Now we'll hear from our city clerk.
My turn. I do have a couple of things for y'all this evening. Uh, the first item that I have is, uh, approval of the recommendation from the tourism committee to recommend, uh, reappointment of Becky Nowell to serve another term.
So nice.
Move and settle that, uh, the approval for this now of the server again. All in favor? As here, motion to carry.
All right. The next item I have is we received a request from the Delta Children's Advocacy Center. Um, April is, uh, child abuse, child abuse awareness month. And they have requested, they have ordered, and you should see uploaded in, uh, your Dropbox folders. They've ordered six flags for child abuse awareness month that they would like to place intermittently on our street light, um, poles, um, banners. They're the banners like we have. And I've checked with Steveo to see if they could be placed on our flags and on our poles and they're adjustable. So he said that he could make them work. Um, so they're seeking approval to place those banners, um, on our poles. And they also, um, have a flag that'll go, I know they've placed the flag in the past on the north end of the walking trail, but this is the first year that they've added the banners.
Okay, so.
Asking our employee to put the.
Well, our, our, our public works employees have to put the banners up because it's on our city polls. Yes, ma'am. Did you? Yes, sir.
All right. So the, the poles that these banners are going to be on, are they going to be on the walking trail or they're just going to be intermittently throughout the town on the streets?
So he did not specify designate which poles, but when I talked to Steveo, he, he felt like downtown will be the best place, um, because he said, if you spread them out too much, there's only six of them. But you just put one somewhere on highway eight and one on highway sixty-one and then, you know, four downtown, you're just, you, they won't be seen as much. Whereas if you put three, like on each side of the downtown, they might be a little more noticeable.
Here's, here's my, here's my concern. Uh, and I think this is great. I think it's absolutely awesome that they're doing this. It would be, it would be nice if these flags were freestanding. And the reason I'm saying that is this. You know, we're going to end up having to adopt some kind of flag and banner policy because we got so many poles and stuff around town. If everybody wants to have an event, wants to put up flags and stuff, it, it's no telling what this place could look like. I'm not.
That's right.
I am totally for their project. I just think we need to rethink what these flags need to look like and where they need to go.
We got a street like North Street coming off, uh, Sharp.
Right. Designate, designate a place.
Downtown. Which street going into the courthouse and just designate an area that could be used for that. Say Park and Court Street.
That's a good idea. You know, because I'm thinking about.
Or Sunflower.
Right, right.
Sunflower.
Because.
A traffic there.
The, um, the poles are designated for those kind of banners.
You got the, that's where those Delta State flags go.
Right.
Be on Sunflower. It's a heavily traveled area.
So where are you saying?
Well, way along Sunflower from, uh, highway sixty-one to Delta State, some, some area in there that would be heavily traveled by thousands of cars every day. And it's more of an open area too.
Here, here's my, here's my concern. What if you have a very controversial group? Who wants to start putting up flags on our banner poles? And I'm not going to get into any kind of political, religious or any kind of gender type issues, but that could happen.
Yeah.
If we just start arbitrarily putting up flags and stuff and banners for every organization, we're, we're going to find ourselves in a little bit of a tight situation when we get one that we, that nobody wants.
I think you ought to study this. I don't, I agree with Gary. We don't have any rules and once you open the door, you've, you're bound to some extent by your prior actions.
Yeah.
Or you, or you can speak to that maybe in another.
Anything you get through this one, you can.
Yes. And what I would suggest is I've got a pretty long memo about signs that I would love to get in your box for y'all to digest and look and see if the way everything was handled was correct. Cause I believe it was handled correct. You know, it's, it's your, your sign ordinance is pretty clear. And at the same time, maybe I can. That's a tough question. Gary's right. Um, I, I come up with something.
Okay.
He doesn't always talk about sizes. We need to look at the size and if we're going to do that, how, how large or wide that these flags are going to be.
Well, they, I think these are things also. Yeah.
I just, you know, we.
They want them up till April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth, so we.
Yeah, we, we're going to have to.
Table this.
We can't table this.
Yes.
You know.
We'll have to.
It'll be passed.
Oh, okay then.
And I will, I will say this for the good order. It's a great thing that Jessica's doing.
Right.
But at the same time, we want to make sure we stay legal in doing it.
Yeah. And I think Belinda Wilford had reached out to the mayor about putting the flag up on the north end of the walking trail because we've done it in years past. So we'll have to reach back out to her because I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah. Cause your, your problem is, is that when you regulate something based on content.
Yes.
That's almost impossible to justify it under the first amendment. So anyway, I, I, I'll get you some stuff.
Totally agree.
So how do we address, how do we address this request?
Can, can we say?
We just don't.
Yes. Can we say that for the moment, we will grant temporary permission to do this, but we will develop an ordinance for future use?
Yes, sir. Y'all, you're not.
Is that your motion?
Well, that would be my motion.
I'll second that. And, and with the perks, I did to move them on Sunflower. The move and second that, uh, we're do like, was it, was it, uh, Gary, Gary said, uh, all in favor of say. As here and a motion to carry.
Please, please, uh, note that I did a poll.
You did. Okay.
Sure, you.
All right. The next item that I have is approval of the poll managers and resolution, resolution board compensation for the, um, April election.
It's so moved.
Second.
Move and second that approval was made for the, uh, election poll manager. Board compensation. All in favor of say. As here, motion to carry.
Okay. The last item that I have for you this evening is I would like to request that we change our second meeting for the month of April from the fifteenth to the twenty-second, because if you look at your calendar, the third Tuesday is next Tuesday. Because the first Tuesday of the month was April first, our third Tuesday would literally be next Tuesday. So we would be meeting in a week.
So do next.
So our actual next meeting, if we change it, it will be the twenty-second, if y'all approve.
Thank you for catching that.
That's so moved.
That's why it's April fool in that month, see.
Sex. All right.
Motion was, was made by.
Abraham.
Abraham and second by this win. Change our meeting, uh, the second.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yes, sir.
Hold. As here.
See, can I ask you one question? Uh, our home grants that we usually apply for, have you heard, got anything?
We did not receive it.
You did not receive?
We did not receive it. Very competitive, very competitive. Um, not much money in the bucket of the type of funds that we apply for. Most of the money in the, in that grant, most of the money goes to new construction instead of renovation. That's right. Right. So a very small amount of funds that goes in the renovation pool. And it's extremely competitive, uh, grant. We, we did not receive it. Um, the last thing that I have is just a reminder for everyone, um, both for everyone that's listening as well as everyone here tonight. Earth Day is this Saturday, April twelfth. Um, so that's for city of Cleveland and Boulder County residents. Um, anything that you have, um, that you need to get rid of, that you can't throw away through normal process, paint. Steveo, you might want to jump in batteries, um, appliances, um.
No commercial.
What was that, Steveo?
Nothing commercial.
Nothing commercial. Thank you for that reminder.
Pretty much everything else.
Yep, that's right. You can, um, dispose of it this Saturday, um, April twelfth, the main drop off works. So just a reminder.
One thing about the city of Cleveland, look like every day is every day to me. We, we get rid of a lot of stuff.
Right. You're right. That's all I have.
Okay.
Now we'll see if, if, in and out of all of them.
We have, um, human resources.
Resource. Yeah, you guys. Resource.
I'll skip her. She might.
Hey, I'll say, okay.
We have some unhappy directors. Um, I have several and reaction, uh, requesting approval unless you have any questions.
Oh, harms, I think.
Any harms.
So I move.
Second. It requested that all new, new hat, everyone is had. Everyone had that requested, uh. All in favor of say. As here, people ahead.
I would say people ahead.
All right, next.
All right, now, now we're ready to go around the table.
Uh, I just wanted to say to, you know, to, to Michelle and this esteemed group that we have here for the city, thank you all. Thank you all from the depths of my heart. Y'all got me through an election that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for. And thanks to each of you all sitting here today. It's an honor to be back to represent you. You know, I don't take that lightly and, you know, and I'm just thankful for the opportunity to continue serving this role. Thank you.
Mr. I just want to congratulate all the incumbents that got reelected and we have a new member to Ward Four. Looking forward to Ms. Uh, Hauser, Marcy Wheeler Hauser taking that position and, uh, ought to be an exciting next four years.
We're not done yet. You still got work to do.
Ms. Wentz?
Thank you.
I want to ask, Billy, I should have asked you earlier and if I just need to get with you after meeting, uh, where are we on apartment rental inspections? What, what?
The letter's been sent out for this year registration?
Yes, sir.
They're coming in, as they come in, they're setting them up. Deadline is July first.
That's one, one, that was the deadline. Okay. Thank you.
Well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I saw.
Was it Gary?
Gary. I don't have anything.
I, uh, I don't have anything myself. I just like to thank everybody that participated in the election. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Congratulations. Uh, anything else?
Are there anything else?
I'm making a motion with the jury.
I second their motion. Being certain that we're doing all in favor of say, as here and a motion to carry.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Y'all have a great night. I read it.